I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. It's five thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. You please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under unity, is one, and for the achievements that we have. Thank you. Rule call, please. Anderson.
Present.
Betafer.
Present.
Kuchar.
Present.
Doobie.
Present.
Folsby.
Present.
Yaris.
Present.
Ravish.
Present.
Seven. I'd like to thank Bonnie for the maid's gift and also for the snacks put out. Assume here. Really good. Do we have any additions to these changes to the agenda?
Chairman, I'd like to item C to the non-consent agenda about the Linwood Park batting cage.
Any other additions, changes? A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, do we have any community comments on the agenda items? Interested in the agenda? Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and pay the bills totaling one million, three hundred and six thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
All right. A motion to support. Any discussion? Rule call, please. Betafer.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yeah.
Doobie.
Yes.
Folsby.
Yes.
Yaris.
Yes.
Ravish. Yes. Kuchar.
Yes.
Seven zero. Thank you. Motion carries. Communication. Mr. Folsby.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchar. Um, we'd like to start off to, uh, with the Linwood Park batting cage, um, construction. Thank you for adding that for the non-consent. Uh, we will be talking about it at the site committee afterwards, but what this is, um, they have received some grants and community support and volunteering to build, uh, structure with a roof where they'll have a batting cage, uh, between the two ball fields, but there's a cement slab already there. Um, so that's, that's what they would like to do and actually would like to get started on it, um, maybe even in December during the, during the break. Uh, but we will talk about more things and if there are questions or concerns at the site committee also. Uh, heating upgrades at the Pink County Advancement Academy. I do have, uh, two bids in here for that. I had a third company come in and look at it and he said that he was unable to get the parts or even anything that he could fix it, get it ready to be fixed. Um, I guess it's been out for quite a while, this, this coil that's in the ceiling. Um, they shut it off a while ago when there were leaks. But recently we had a, um, visit from our state, the GSRP and the Little Ones, and you can't have mobile, the, the heaters plugged in in that office. And right now the office and bathrooms in the front have no heat, uh, due to that being blocked off. So that's where this is coming from. Uh, and we have the, uh, the bid in there and the suggestion to get that approved so we can get some heat into the Advancement Academy office and bathrooms. Any questions about that at all? We actually looked at maybe doing one of those mini splits also, um, but it wouldn't go to the bathroom then if the bathrooms don't have heat and it wasn't too much more to fix it the right way with the, the parts that were in there. So that's why we were looking at that direction. No. Parent guidance letter. Uh, parent guidance. We have had about thirteen months of support from the Cook Center and parentguidance.org. Uh, I would like to see more families using this unique opportunity and helpful service. But last week I had a letter sent to me regarding, uh, what this online service has meant to her family. And I had her permission and just wanted to read a portion of that letter. Um, then the email came out about the grant for the parent guidance program. We were having a difficult, uh, difficulty really related to one of our children, so I decided to sign up for some parenting classes. I didn't realize until after I started with the process that the change was going to start with me and I was scared, probably terrified is a better word. But I got to the program anyway. I needed to do this even if I didn't want to. Some of it was really hard. I have to be honest about that. It uncovered things I had pushed aside, not really considering they had such a huge impact on how I interacted with others. Some of it made me angry as I realized with a crappy hand that I'd been dealt as a young, at a young age, but it also taught me to understand why I was treated the way, that way, and I'm starting to develop some empathy and understanding. The whole process has really opened my eyes and made me realize that I had this awesomeness in me all along. Now I have the tools to shine that onto my children and encourage them to be their own awesome selves. That's something I never had growing up and I am excited to be given the opportunity to give that to them. I absolutely adore my parenting coach. She has shown me things that I would never see in myself. Whether she is just really good at her job or just an amazing person, probably both. She's opened my eyes and taught me a lot about myself and how it's okay to be me. That fed my confidence so much and enabled me to take all of this to the next level. I knew this was a big deal when she would tell me that I was enough at the end of our sessions and I would just be stunned by the impact of that simple phrase. I now have confidence, self-love, and am so much more present. I listen to my children. We engage in conversations and I know more of what is going on so I can be there when things get tough. Our home is more calm and really feels like a sanctuary for us all. I'm even developing more relationships at work and advancing my career. That, I think, is just a delightful little side effect. I've seen this entire program as a gift that came to me personally at the perfect time. I am truly grateful to the district for making this available and I'm going to take full advantage of it as long as I can. So pretty cool that, you know, this program, it's like I said, it's not reaching as many people as I wanted to, or maybe I, maybe it is more than we think. Um, but it was really neat getting that letter and seeing that, you know, we made a difference in one family and probably a lot more, so. Well, it was great. Uh, esports championship event. I'm not gonna talk too much about it because I'm sure we have others that are gonna talk about it. Uh, I just wanted to congratulate the kids and the coaches, um, for having a great season and a great year. Uh, it's been a lot of fun with that. Policy addition. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit. I know it's our second reading. Um, but just wanted to mention that the protection from retaliation document added to the board policy that our CEO rep would give him to him. He thought we may not need it due to most of the wording already being in there. Um, but I think there's enough differences to add it and it's not contradicting our policy. It's more of a statement that is pretty easy for us to add. So I wanted to throw that out there to you. And then finally, um, it is always a great time, um, in November when we get our two percent grants from the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan. That happened a couple of weeks ago. We received, uh, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty-one cents. And the grants that we received, staff wellness at Central, Mount Forest Nature Trail, we're going to do our cross-country events. Fun and fitness, that's a one of those giant blow-up, uh, obstacle courses for Central, so when they have rain days or field days, they can use that. Primary learning tools and activities, um, materials for fifth grade at Central, kindergarten class, T-shirts, McDonald's lunch, kindergarten memory books, and class rewards are all, um, Central kindergarten. Pink County Metal Shop cheer, uh, to bet in metal. And the funny thing is, we looked into that. It is, uh, a fifteen thousand dollar piece of equipment and they said ordering it now, we can get it in in twelve to fourteen months. So quite a way for that piece of equipment, but we're ordering it. Uh, Pink County Robotics, uh, novels for our English department, bus surveillance, which is really neat because we're gonna have some cameras on our arms that go down to see what cars are going past us when they shouldn't be. It catches their license numbers and it does some neat things. And then, uh, Great Lakes Bay Area Sound Project, we're, uh, helping out and giving them some money with that also. So we, we love being part of this, this process and appreciate what the Saginaw Chippewa tribe does for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Student rep report. Saint Peter.
To start, High School Student Council, the members of the High School Student Council will be visiting the Central Elementary on Thursday and Friday to re-holiday evening stories because we're a little holiday each year. This year, this collaboration gives the high school students a chance to be a mentor while giving valuable topics to be experienced. It also allows importance in the reading of our elementary students. Pink County Student Council will be sponsoring the holiday extravaganza assembly on Thursday, December twenty-first. Its center will feature holiday evening games and random distribution of gift cards donated by the school and community organizations and individuals. Student council wants to thank each of the janitors and individuals who've donated gift cards for this event. The middle school and high school student council will be sponsoring the dress-up venues of a weekly private Christmas break. Monday will be Christmas as a jam day. Tuesday will be a sweater day. Wednesday, Christmas bells, sock and hat day. Thursday will be ready to play all the outfits and must-see requirements of a school dress code. Esports team, the Spartan Cheeriot Mario Kart team, Jacob Stoneback, Eli Kudiman, Griffin Moran, Cameron Jacob, and Dylan Cracker Mouse defeated St. Leon High School two to one on Saturday's state semifinals. The team then fell to Richmond Schools, three to zero, and in finals, the team looks forward to finding their way back to the finals in the upcoming spring season. The esports program is organizing for the upcoming winter-spring season. We will hopefully once again have two Mario Kart teams. It looks though we will also have two Super Smash Brothers teams for the upcoming season. The teams are currently raising funds to purchase the new equipment needed for the expanded teams as well as expenditures for the upcoming season. The National Honor Society sponsors the Super Saiyan Saturday, it's a packed Saturday in the middle school gymnasium. Children from the rural district had the opportunity to play holiday evening games, make holiday crafts, and visit with Santa Claus. The winter band concert was held yesterday in the middle school gymnasium. The concert featured the beginning band, the seventh and eighth grid band, and the high school symphonic band. A packed gymnasium enjoyed sounds from the season performed by a talented group of high-class students. Bowling, the girls' bowling team handily defeated Claire twenty-nine to one on Saturday. The win featured Sean Baker names of one forty-one and one sixty-nine for Pink County. High bowlers for the Spartan included Leila St. Peter with a one seventy-three and a one seventy-eight. Thank you. Sheila Power pulled a one sixty-one and Lexi Drows tripped in with a one fifty-three. The boys' bowling team will face Claire in Harrison this evening. The Claire's boy team graciously rescheduled Saturday's match to allow Pink County's esports team to compete in the state championships. Middle school student council sponsored Red vs. Spring Christmas Day Dance on Friday, December first. Students enjoyed DJ Rocket Ride, tons of snacks, a photo booth, and holiday-themed games. A huge thank you to the numerous volunteers who helped make this event a success. The varsity boys' basketball team has started the season four to one with impressive wins against Ogama Heights, Akron Bear Grove, and Farwell. The boys continue their winning ways with home games against Harrison on Wednesday and Beaverton this Friday. The varsity girls' basketball team has started the season with a one-to-two record, defeating Akron Bear Grove last week, fifty-seven to fourteen. The girls will travel to Harrison on Tuesday and Beaverton on Thursday. Seven Spartan athletes medaled at the Meridian Duel Saturday, December ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Those athletes were Matt White, Kejon Ford, Tim Betafer, Logan Peckum, Alyssa Dennison, Alex Revard, and Drake Snyder. Spartans will wrap up their middle school season this week facing the White Pine Hawks at White Pine Middle School on Tuesday, December twelfth, and at home against Bay City Thursday, December fourteenth. Both of these matches start at four thirty P.M. The Pink County Youth Wrestling Team has started the Rumble Tumble Clinic for all area students, kindergarten through third grade. They had an outstanding turnout with forty student athletes looking to improve their athleticism. Special thank you to coaches Jason Pembroke, Isaiah Thomas, and Eric Swinson for putting this together. The youth team starts practice Wednesday, January third, twenty-twenty-four, from three P.M. to four thirty P.M. in the old type purpose room. We are looking forward to this.
Great. Thank you. Congrats. Uh, administrative staff.
Thank you. Cover beats. No, I think the only thing I would add on is just wrestling, too. Uh, we have a Bay County tournament that's coming up and they actually have a that are going to, it's Southwestern to play as well. Everything else has been covered, so we're off and rolling.
Okay. Um, I've had a couple show and tell items that I'll present on the women's summit first, as promised. So a couple of good facts. Um, so the women's summit was held November twelfth and thirteenth in Grand Rapids at the Amway Grand, um, hosted by the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, otherwise known as MASP. There were two hundred and ninety attendees. Um, forty-five schools were in attendance from around the state. There were three keynote speakers, thirty breakout sessions, and out of forty-three survey respondents, one hundred percent said that they would recommend the event to us. Who attended, myself, three high school, um, female, female high school, high school students, Claire Donahue, who's an eleventh grader and a local gymnast, Addison Cooley, who's a tenth grader, and then, um, she does JV volleyball and is on both high school teams. Josie Wieland, another eleventh grader, uh, who's also on the varsity girls' basketball team. Um, a couple of things that we learned. Um, I particularly enjoyed the, one of the special guest feature speakers, one of which is from Banger. Um, she graduated in two thousand and eighteen from John Glenn. Um, her name's Janaye Lodewick and she is the third female to work as the team assistant equipment manager for the Detroit Pistons. And she's recently been promoted to the player and family engagement. She's super young. Um, her topic both focused mostly on perseverance. Um, she was incredibly inspiring. Um, she's currently running for Mid-Michigan, so, or sorry, Miss Michigan, and came over to the table following her discussion uh, to talk to myself and the students about her, um, running, um, and to gather support from our county. Um, other sessions that I attended, specifically, um, the girls and I attended some similar sessions, but they attended some different sessions than me. Um, we attended Newsworthy Women, Women Who Do It All, Finding Work-Life Balance, Self-Defense, Proactive Personal Safety, Lessons Learned From Researching the Career Journey of Female Secondary Principals. Why I think it was valuable, I know with the girls that attended, um, and myself, we all were uplifted primarily, but we were inspired as a result of attending. Um, and I know that all four of us are incredibly grateful to have been given the opportunity to attend. Um, and I think setting a goal to set, maybe, I don't know, set a goal to send a group annually, um, especially from a high school level would be valuable to the female population of Pink County. So I also wanted to pass around, you can just take a look at what we've developed. Behavior matrix and then these cards as well. Um, so the behavior matrix process was started in August with our staff meeting. Um, and each staff meeting thereafter, we kind of addressed little bits of it, kind of moved it along. Um, but we worked and started with staff to establish agreed upon common spaces within the building, um, and expectations for each of those spaces. We also voted and agreed upon what it means to have pride and we selected one attribute per letter. So P stands for being prepared, R is for respectful, I is to have integrity, and D is to be dependable, and then lastly, E is to be engaged. So we worked for several months on this process to develop the matrix that you'll now see up around school. Um, we're reinforcing these expectations by handing out pride tickets, school-wide, to students who demonstrate any of these pride elements. We collect them and then on Fridays, we pull eight tickets. Um, those students are rewarded with a pencil, a McDonald's like drink coupon. Um, they can pick up boxes of candy and then they also have their picture taken. We post it on social media every week. Um, we add a reminder of what pride stands for in the morning announcements every day. And we will be focusing, um, come January, following the holiday break. Um, each day in the morning announcements, we'll pick a letter just to kind of refocus, um, the expectations coming back after break. The safety cards that you see passing around, um, we started the process to have these safety cards with a summary of all the emergency procedures district-wide. Um, this is just a booklet, kind of a rough draft. We'll send it print. Um, it'll be a lot higher quality, but, um, once it's approved by all administrators, they'll go to print and be placed in all classrooms throughout the district. Um, also last Wednesday, the middle school and high school rulings had the Bay County Juris Department throw dogs in the search facility. Um, they had four dogs come in. The search was incredibly efficient. The process was really neat to witness, I thought, and I think it just gives us all peace of mind that we have them as a resource if we ever need them. And then lastly, middle school student of the month. Um, they're voted out by staff each month and this month the winners were Avery Dennis, the sixth grader, Alyssa Paul, the seventh grader, and Ella Hunter, eighth grader. And these students were rewarded with Saginaw Spirit tickets, um, which were gifted to our middle school by Barbara Chevrolet.
Thank you. Very well designed. Black grader. I like that. Other middle grader?
So we had a behavior committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it's made up of a few teachers, um, staff that, uh, are focused on, you know, trying to, um, get in front of this, run a good stuff with behavior. A couple of things that were discussed was, uh, party policy. We recently have been enforcing, um, our party policy more so just trying to be more consistent with that so that when, um, students, when the final bell rings, teachers are closing their doors and students are, at first there was a little bit of a hump-tick attorneys, but now they know that they gotta get to the classroom door, those doors closed, so we're seeing that, uh, be effective. We've also talked about cell phones at the high school level. And just making sure that the staff are the call of hand of the cell phone. I just talked with the union today and we're gonna have another behavior committee meeting coming up pretty quick here. Uh, probably not for the, the break, but after that, and then I'll invite any board members that are interested in kind of seeing what that looks like. I'll let you know when you get there. Uh, our number staff meeting is, we had Adrian Cole from the I S D come in to discuss the use of AI for teachers. AI is kind of getting a bad rap, uh, just because, you know, the stigma is that kids are using it to cheat on assignments, things like that, but it's also very useful for teachers. So the main thing that she talked about was using it to multi-differentiate instruction for high achievers and some that are struggling and also for our non-Spansish students, so. You can basically get your assignment, upload the PDF to AI system, and then it'll spit out that assignment Spanish, which is, which is good because we're seeing more and more of our students Spanish speaking. So that was cool to have that. Also provided the current openings. I do think I have a study locked up, but beside that, we have a parent professional we need to fill, middle school English, middle school health, special education, and a senior.
Sorry.
But we do have kids that are, that are sending stuff in. I'm seeing that go through and I know, uh, our process, we're in the process of getting those positions filled, so. Hopefully, I'm hoping by Christmas, before Christmas break, we can interview some of these candidates and get them all. Definitely give them the crutch of those, of those missing samples.
Kyle, how come it's taken so long on the health position?
Well, we did have a candidate, um, we lost some dates, but we did have a candidate that expressed an interest in doing the committee logo. But then they kind of backed off. They came and did a visit and they just stopped ultimately. But I do think that we have another candidate in the hop, right? I'm totally. Hopefully by Christmas break, some things line up. Uh, our parent advisory meeting that's taking place for the first time, we had a teacher show up. Had some discussion on cell phones, on our dress code policy and lines of communication. Just trying to open up lines of communication for parents to be. We want parents to feel comfortable coming to initiatives and just bridge an idea to give the community a sense. Had a really good, really good conversation this time to contest to that. It was very productive and we just did notes that I take. You guys possibly need. Um, last thing that I have, a little extra note. Oh, momentary. Those are gonna be the first working in the month at four thirty, so again, any more members coming up and have some conversation with the community. More involved. Last note that I had here was girl for staff. Michelle Goldie and the I S D is putting together like a workshop type thing for teachers that are aspiring to be principals or even go to administration, so. Couple of months back, she had mentioned this, so I had put some people in there to staff, go, you know, who would be interested in this. We got some, maybe four or five staff members that are looking to go in that direction. Hey, we did recently set up some information on when those workshops are gonna be, so I sent that information over to teachers. I just think it's really important, you know, it is a fresh shell. Teachers and staff members grow into the next level, so we'll question that. We hope that gives that a little.
Kyle, where, where's the, your meeting at?
We meet at room one sixteen.
Okay. And are you looking at reaching out to the, the school to see if we have any shop teachers? Cause that's gonna be just as difficult as special, special ed by.
We have most staff position, yeah.
No, I mean, reach out, see if there's any student teachers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Both the student teachers and what, what better way to have a hell of an interview for, send them in there for eight, ten weeks, fifteen weeks, whatever they're doing now.
Right. Yeah, we actually have a candidate for our middle school people's stage coming through today. Slushy, so she's scheduled to be in, uh, this is combo classroom student teaching, but she's actually applying for uh, open position. We have this, this flight design, so, uh, yeah. Let me get that every step. It's an option. And she's either.
Thank you. Bye.
Um, just a couple of things going on at Linwood. Um, last Friday night, we had a parents' night out event hosted by our Linwood parent group. We had about forty kids come in and participate for three hours from five to eight. Um, while the parents just, you know, went out and did some Christmas shopping or maybe had a date night. A lot of fun. Um, so I know we'll be doing that again. Next week, we're gonna have a spirit week. It's always fun to do that. The staff loves how you pajama day, so we've got a comfy clothes day on Monday and then pajama day on Thursday, so give them two days next week. Um, this Thursday, we are having our auction and Christmas program. Auction starts at twelve-thirty, but the Christmas program beginning at one-thirty. Um, we've got some really cool items that we're gonna auction off and the money is gonna go into our activity account that we'll use for, um, field trips and/or, um, our pride ticket rewards. And speaking of pride to get rewards, next Thursday, excuse me, next Wednesday, we're gonna take a statewide field trip, so all kindergarten through fifth grade students and adults are gonna go to state theater to see a movie, um, as a reward for one of our pride tickets. So we have, um, collective pride tickets every week, similar to what the middle school does. We draw winners and then we just keep track. Um, and so they're earning their goal of four thousand, which is the movie. So the next one will be five thousand and, you know, so on and so forth. So the kids are really excited about that. And finally, we are currently asking, um, businesses around Linwood and Pink County, um, for donations to help us send our fourth and fifth grade students to a ski and snowboard trip to Snow Snake Mountain. So it's about twenty-two hundred dollars, um, for our forty students to go, which includes, um, a lift ticket, rentals, lesson, the bus, and, um, lunch for the day. So we started, um, asking for donations today. I do have a letter that's, I'm sending out as well, so. And once you guys, just so you can see what we're doing, um, at the end. And, um, our hope is not to ask parents for, for too much money, but we need to be well. Um, but we're just hoping our community will step up and just kind of help us out. And then for some reason we get more than what we need, we're gonna use that for our K-three students to go ice skating. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody left, left for administrators? All right, uh, board committees? Non-consent agenda, superintendent, you got a wish? We had that in your board package before and, uh, you had the evidence or little comments, uh, from Mr. Folsby for each one and hopefully it's. from Mr. Walchek for each one, and hopefully if you had any questions, you reached out to him for any clarifications. Essentially, I wanna go through this kind of, I don't know if we need to go through it by each characteristic, or if you want them by domain, or if there's any questions right off. So if you look at the first domain. So domain one, the sum of. I think at one A. I guess I'll start with, I guess I'll start with what I have, and we can go from there. It's on page two, near back there. So that's the growth targets on mandatory state academic measures, both annual interim assessments, I have that rated as effective. Anybody deviate much from that? Okay. For item one B, the growth targets on other valid local academic measures, including non-lecturing and reference assessments. I do have that based on Andy's evidence is highly effective.
Yeah, agree.
Anybody agreed? And then for item C, growth targets on valid research supportive behavioral measures associated with academic achievement, I have that as effective. Yeah, okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing on my, I'm not getting in stereo, so. And then item D, growth targets on valid research supportive psycho-social and emotional measures, I have that also as effective.
Yeah.
And then, I don't believe we had to do that on page four, because we're doing it, we're doing that top portion, part of that, part of the main one, so we shouldn't have done that. So that leads us to domain two, which is leadership. Yes, I'll make this simple, I have it all as highly effective.
Agreed.
Any discussion on that? Very nice work. And again, it's nice for my habit for yourself there, too, Mr. Walchek. So that was two A, two B, and then, I guess turn to the page two, C, factor. You guys are good with highly effective for both two A and two B. All right, and then two C. I have that as, so this is leadership behavior. I have two C one, as informed, current, as highly effective. Again, Andy is highly involved in seeking out that information, which is really good for a first year of superintendentity. I think he has a, kind of knows what he doesn't know, and he's really seeking out to verify what he does know, and did a really good job trying to find that, that balance and be well informed up to date. On the next one, strategic and systemic, I really kind of bounced back and forth there. It was effective for that. Highly effective, any? Effective, okay. So, yeah, all right, two C two? Two C two, if they go with effective, yes. And then domain two, again, leadership for characteristic three, fair, legal, honest, and ethical. For two C three, I have that as highly effective.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so that you're a stand-up person, Andy, I think we all knew that going into it. And then adaptive and resilient, I have that as effective. And I, I, I think he's good at what he, what he does, but a year and a half, reliable resilience along the way. I don't know if you might quite challenge it up from here, as much as you've been challenged the first year and a half, but still, good job, effective, just don't think we get into that definition of highly effective. Domain three, the systems. For three A one. Which is guaranteed, guaranteed in viable curriculum, I have that as highly effective. And I think he supported decent evidence for that. And then characteristic two, evidence-based and differentiated instruction, I have that marked as effective.
Yes.
Creation from that. Okay, anybody else highly wanna violate or? I don't mean the tiebreaker, no? All right. I think you ought to be, so we'll go effective on that one. Again, it's good, I just don't think we, we get to that highly effective, but close. Yeah, I think a lot of these were debatable. And I think next year, everybody's going to just effective, they're getting rid of the highly effective, I know for teachers, so, and I thought they're doing the same, they should, they should follow, so, that was, to me, that was the big debate on all of them. So there's a lot of similarities, I think, between effective and highly effective. So then if we get to three A three, which is guaranteed assessment and feedback, I had that as highly effective. Again, I thought he provided some really good evidence that had it go into that category. And then characteristics number four, technology to expand learning opportunity, I have that highly effective. And again, it's based on the evidence, you know, I, on my own thought, I was thinking effective, but he definitely provided the evidence to back up highly effective, so we're good on all those. And domain three characteristic, one, laws, policies, and regulations, so. Three B one, right? Three B one, okay, I'm in. So I have that as highly effective. Again, he provided solid evidence for that. And then characteristic processes and procedures, three B two, I have that as effective.
Yeah.
And then characteristic three, resource allocation and management, three B three, I have that as highly effective. Again, looking at that and the evidence, they provided just helpful for that, helpful for that. Characteristic four, personal policies and practices, three B four, I have that as effective. And then three B five, non-instructional technology, I also have that.
I'd always like to see the website either be approved or abandoned.
Yeah.
Seems like that's a little, but I can, I'm more right now.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we still have three highly, so, I mean. And again, yeah. Highly effective, and I agree, I mean, the website, we've been talking about for a while, it's tough to do, go and search and find certain things, so. I know it's been approved upon, but I guess stuff that's changing quite often.
I think we will wait for the website, that's, I think, the same. Something we're about, a resource for farmers, and not for information, not for daily information.
Most parts, like I think athletics is really good, like there's a lot of information on the athletic age and passes and how to do things. The others, maybe not as much, but.
I know. I know the, the parent meeting, and then the one you and I went to last, about spring or whatever it was, they had a lot, the parent advisory, had a lot of good comments on what they'd like to see, where the misses are at, so I'm sure Kyle can provide that, and those parents come there too.
Sources of information.
Yeah. But I know, I've gone. Yeah, but I'd still like to go, I think we have enough that use the website, and even if I typed something in fairly specific in the search, I, I don't get anything, or it says we don't have it, and I have to do a deeper dive, and there it is, so, yeah. Anyway, I, I, again, highly effective, but that's something that definitely I think needs to be addressed with the other. I mean, four processes, characteristics number one, more relations. Look, I have this as effective.
Where are you at?
Four A one, organizations. Oh, no, I did slide that over. Highly effective, sorry. There's a lot of writing, I didn't see where I put my star at. So highly effective on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, weekly communications, contacts us, I think he did a really good job there. Leadership and team relations, I have that also as highly effective. Again, the evidence is nice, but I think we see a lot of that in itself, whether it's at the meeting or just operations. So again, very strong, Andy, so keep that up. Characteristic three, so four A three, I have that also as highly effective.
Agreed.
And then characteristic four, or domain four, I also have that as highly effective. Process number four, having to be some improvements, characteristic one, collaborative inquiry. You have effective on that?
And four B one?
I had it.
Four, four B one, highly effective, or?
I noted for.
Highly effective, or? All right, so, Chris, what did you have for that one?
I'm fine either way. I had effective.
All right, we're just gonna split on that, so we'll go with the effective on that one.
Andy was the tiebreaker, he rated himself.
Characteristic two, systematic use of multiple data resources, where are you guys on that one? I have a highly.
I have effective.
And then characteristic three, data systems. Four, B three. Effective or highly? And then aligned improvement monitoring and reporting. Highly on that one?
I do.
Okay, and I thought he does a pretty good job on his systems and how he's checking things. Domain five, capacity, professional learning, give that as active. Okay. And then leadership development, I also have that as effective, but I know that one was a tough one. Highly? My name's Ali.
Yeah, Ali.
Highly?
I'm rereading it here, I've got highly marked.
You had highly marked?
I did.
Okay, and yeah, that was tough for me, I might have been, we're giving too many highs at this point, we gotta back it down a bit, maybe a little more. I know that's not how it's supposed to work, but I'm a teacher, I was like, I can't give that many eights.
Right, right.
Well, yes. I also go back to what my evaluations go, it's like, say, it's where you visit, not where you, or where you live, or where you visit, so you may be highly effective this, you know, occasionally, but it's meant to be a very consistent type thing, so that kind of creeping into my mind, so I think that's why I become a little, give it a little harder on that. So do you wanna go highly effective on that? I mean, again, I think he's strong, so we'll move that one to highly effective. And then leadership development, I'm sorry, that one was? Yeah, that was five A two, so that one, yep. Five A three, I had that as highly effective. And then five A four, I had that as effective. Yes?
Yep, that's right.
Capacity building, contextual and political awareness, I had that as highly effective. Put that even above that, if we wanted to, definitely a strong suit, and again, I, I, I think that's, that's great, with how he's really attacking that, being informed and using that information. And then characteristic two, the same thing, education advocacy, highly effective. So, you know, you're already established in the community, so, and all the organizations you were part of, and just kept it going, so, real nice job. So I will put this together and see where the final tally comes, I would guess you're gonna be highly effective, but we'll see how the numbers kind of play out, I know it's, it's hard to get there, because it's a real high bar to go, but we'll pick that out, then I can let the board know. Excellent job, personnel, maybe, maybe they're also in, kind of get your goals going again, but you've been here, not a year and a half yet, your third semester, I think, as you can see, we're quite happy with how you're doing, you know, your development, the team, and you're delegating well, putting the responsibilities on them, and supporting them, I think that's evident, so everything's just really strong, so, great work, Andy, thank you so much for coming back to our district. Any other comments? Oh, so we need a motion to accept the superintendent evaluation. And, or, I guess, need that as a, I'll just say highly effective, is there any debate on that? I think he's there, so it's supported, because superintendent evaluation is highly effective, so we have motion for support from them. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dubey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Betifur?
Yes.
Olstein?
Yes.
Yarris?
Yes.
Ravish?
Yes.
Kucher?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, congratulations, Andy. Now I consent agenda, item B.
Big promotion. Approved. Base side builders. A bit of twelve thousand five hundred forty dollars. That, that's heating and air conditioning?
No, that's just.
Just to eat?
Yes. I think.
And you just checked the. See what's air conditioning.
Three ton A C outdoor unit. That, was that for the?
That's custom.
That was the mini split.
Okay.
That we're not doing. Yeah.
Right.
That would have been both.
That's why I was saying. Right, if we're gonna do air, we have to go with the other one. But we didn't ask for bids for.
No.
That's why cans or base types, those are, they want the, just for the heating.
All right, so the motion second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yarris?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Betifur?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Olstein?
Yes.
Ravish?
Yes.
Kucher?
Yes.
Seven zero.
C, youth organization. No, it's a bad topic.
I'll move that we allow the Linwood, the big improvement or betterment committee to start their batting cages down there.
That's all we do, is just, we're allowing.
Support, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public comments? I'd like to adjust the board.
I'll say something, I have a few minutes for play, so.
All right, and your?
Thank you for.
Your name, please?
Cam Scharr.
Okay.
President of Linwood Youth Organization, VP John F. Olsley, right next to me as well. But thank you for allowing, within the Pride of Association Baseball League throughout the area, almost every place has batting cages except for them, and you have. And you have a hard time in the spring to give them the necessity, the areas, necessity to practice. And when it rains, we have nowhere to go and we send the kids off. And they're playing video games like that. So it'd be nice to have a place where we can hide on the rain, still throw the ball and still hit the ball. So that's a whole goal. I'm also gonna put it on the basketball court, that's basketball hoops are now no longer there. We'd like to utilize that slab as well. So again, we got fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars in grant money, funding from the Bay Area Community Foundation. So and then Linwood Youth is gonna supplement the rest of the money as well. We've got to. So again, thank you. I'd love to say in committee meeting, but just like basketball games and baseball games, we had plays at six thirty. So I've got United recording. And I do want to say I'm very pleased that the school district has this wonderful superintendent back here. I had him as teacher in middle school and for years I wanted to see him back. So I I really think this school district is on right path with him at the time, so.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Discussion ends by the board. All right, and that brings us to. Discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.